Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 9th, 2020. And our first order of business is approval of our minutes from the November 20th meeting. Have you already had a chance to take a look at those? Anybody want to make a motion on that?
We accept the minutes as written.
Second.
All right. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. All opposed? All right, great. Our next order of business is going to be some new business and we're going to hear from a citizen concerning the removal of a building in the Kroger Shopping Center on Boonsborough Road and concerns about that. So if you would like to, is Paul, Mr. McClure, yeah, if you'd like to come forward and I'm going to give you 10 minutes. So if you'd come forward, state your name, sign, and then you can discuss things. No, I know you had mentioned about recusal. I don't think, since we're not, we're not holding a public hearing on making a change, I don't think you have to recuse yourself. Would that be correct, Rachel?
That would be correct. If Planning Commission decides to make some kind of action, you could recuse yourself at that point.
I just didn't want to have any tension in the car.
Yeah. So we'll be hearing concerns today. Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great greetings. Thanks to all of you for allowing me to speak. Thank you also for your initial responses to my earlier emails. My name's Paul McClure. My wife Kate and I have lived in Lynchburg for two and a half years. We moved here from Texas and I work at the University of Lynchburg in the Department of Sociology and Human Services. But I'm here as a private citizen and I'm representing a number of concerned residents who live on Clayton Avenue. When my wife and I bought our house back in 2018, we inquired to our then-realtor, Amy Scott, about the two-story structure that is at the back of the property. Like any prospective homebuyer, we wanted to know what's around us, who our neighbors are going to be, and what nuisances, if any, there might be that we could anticipate. The building that is now proposed to be demolished was not a concern, though, because as Amy Scott showed us then and as we've come to realize since, it provides substantial protection and privacy from any light and noise that might emanate from the Kroger parking lot. Since October, when plans for the demolition of this building were announced in the news in advance, we've come to realize that there's some history with this building and the current residents of Clayton. Bob Garby, a retired architect who helped convert the federal courthouse to this very city hall, and was also involved in the former Carter Glass Building, which I believe is now clout fit, has lived on Clayton for 55 years. He, along with Mark and Dudley Fairchild, and David and Ellen Petty, remember when the Kroger Shopping Center was built in the mid-1980s. And at that time, it was an expanse of woods that stretched all the way back from Clayton to Spotswood Avenue. And so I'm here representing them, as well as some of the other more recent residents of Clayton Avenue, many of whom will have young children under the age of five. We're concerned about the demolition of the building, that it will lead to a substantial loss of privacy and protection, and an influx of noise and light pollution from the Kroger Shopping Center. And we would like to know if there are plans for a fuel center in the Kroger Shopping Center, and if so, where and why have we not been notified? We'd like to know if the developer will work with the power company to ensure that any planted evergreen trees will remain in the buffer. And as I've learned from my neighbors, when the building was initially built in the 80s, there was a requirement in the building code for a vegetative evergreen buffer, as there is today. But as soon as those trees that were planted reached maturity, they were cut down without notice from the power company. And there's no upkeep or maintenance of the buffer, to our knowledge. We would also like to inquire about the surface water in the ravine and the retention pond. And I think what most residents are concerned about is what will become of their backyards once the building is gone. And while it's not the most attractive building to begin with, it does not have windows which would allow its current tenants, business tenants, to look into our yards. And the current photometric study does not appear to take into consideration the existing light poles that are in the Kroger Shopping Center now. The proposal does show the addition of two new lampposts nearer to our properties, as well as 41 additional parking spots, but it does not adequately explain what the lighting effects of the existing poles will be on our properties, which are listed on the actual site plan. I don't have a lot of technical know-how of how to read these plans, but I saw my name listed in the actual proposal, along with my neighbors on the street. And I would assume that, were this center built today without the two-story structure there, there would be requirements for the height and brightness of those poles, perhaps to be shorter than they are currently, or dimmer than they are now. And if you look at some of the pictures I included in an earlier email to you, the first one shows how prominent the two-story building is. The picture was taken from my back deck about a week or two ago, and the evergreen trees that you can see are on my side of the property. The most distant trees are planted in the buffer zone between my property and the building, but one to the left in the picture is about to fall over, and the other two are not evergreens, and they don't really obstruct a line of sight that would result with the demolition of the building. The second photograph is taken, just to provide you some context, from the second floor of my house, and it shows much of the same, and it shows that this is really a quite massive building. It stretches the length of the block from where the Salzman's live at 1503 Clayton Avenue all the way to Bob Garby's house at 1601 Clayton Avenue. And so, as you know, it's a very large building, and its absence will surely affect us in some way. The third picture I've included was taken at night off my back deck, and it shows just a very faint glow of Kroger Shopping Center lights. And so the picture as an attachment looks, it looks almost entirely black, and that's the point. If the building is not there, however, I imagine that we could see up to 10 light poles from the Kroger Shopping Center that would look through the tree line. The tree line, which is ours, and not a part of the ravine. The fourth picture is taken at my fence line, and it shows, I think, again, how large and looming this building is. If it were not there, then the proposed site plan has parking spots where those air conditioning units are, meaning that cars would be parked at an elevation point above my fence line and the fence lines of my neighbors, shining their headlights into our backyards at night. That's the fear, at least. And the last picture is from the second floor of my house, and it shows one of the existing light poles from the Kroger Center. Again, if this building were not there, which I know it probably won't be, I suspect my neighbors and I would see several more of these from our windows and backyards at night. And I have other pictures, too, which I can share with you after the meeting if you wish, which show the presence of the utility poles and the debris in the ravine. But since I'm nearing my time allotment, I should focus on the petition that I brought with me and the request of my neighbors. We wish for a wall or a fence of considerable height that will obstruct headlights, dampen noise, and mitigate debris and trash that oftentimes end up in the ravine. We would like to see a row of evergreen trees of substantial thickness and height to obstruct the line of sight between our properties and the Kroger Shopping Center. If or when the building comes down, we would like to make sure that the existing light poles in the Kroger Shopping Center are up to code with respect to our properties. And lastly, we want to ask that the power lines are buried underground in the ravine, or that if they are to remain for some reason, there are provisions in place so that the power company cannot come down and cut the trees off before they reach maturity. So those are our requests. On behalf of the petitioners who live on Clayton Avenue, thank you for listening to us and for your time and attention to these matters. I'm happy to answer any questions about some of the points I've just raised, and I still invite you to my house if you'd like to see firsthand our concerns, and I'd like to know what I need to do to present some of these issues to City Council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. And I think as a body, we share your concerns. That's a center that my family goes to, and I know some of us live near that, and, you know, I think one of the, one of the things that we need to do is make sure that, that planning staff addresses these issues. So I would like to ask that we hear a little bit from staff, and, you know, before we move on.
Okay, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission. So I think the best thing for us to do as planning staff would be to respond to some of these more technical questions about stormwater, fences, buffers, that sort of thing, in a memo to Mr. McClure, and that way he can share it with the neighbors. But just during the meeting, one thing I do want to address is their concern about not being notified of the proposed demolition and site plan and potential fuel center. So lots of times when we talk about projects, if they're at the Planning Commission stage, meaning they're going to City Council, that means it's, it needs a public hearing. It needs public input because it's a zoning change, or a conditional use permit, or talking about changing proffers, that sort of thing. But not every development requires a public hearing, and that means it's a by-right development. So with each zoning classification, in this case B3, which is what the parcel with the Kroger Shopping Center is zoned, there's a set of uses that are allowed by right and do not require special permission from Planning Commission or Council to go forward. So this isn't a rezoning, there's no proffers to change, it's not a conditional use permit. So there's no public hearing or notification required. So the owner of the parcel is within their right to demolish the building and put parking in its place. Planning staff doesn't have a say in the matter. We do review site plans to ensure that it's meeting code, but as far as judgment of whether or not it's a good idea to demolish the building, that's not something that comes into play here. It's the owner slash developer's choice because it's a by-right development. So Planning Commission and City Council can't stop or change the development in this case. I do understand the neighborhood's concerns over removing the smaller retail spaces especially, and planning staff did express that in our meetings with the developer. But again, there's nothing binding in that. They can choose to demolish it if they, if they want. So legally, we can't stop them from changing this site, as long as what they want to do is allowed by our zoning ordinance, which in this case it is. We did have a preliminary discussion with them about adding a fuel center, which would be located up closer to Boonsborough Road. But the status on that is, we've not had any formal site plan submitted. So that was just a conceptual discussion that we had, I think, in June of this year. So the only formal submittal they've had is the site plan that Mr. McClure is referencing to demolish and add parking.
So if there's been substantial changes in the requirements of developers from, this was built, I think, in the early 80s.
Mm-hmm.
Have there been substantial changes in the requirements for developers in the way of lighting, runoff, things? There's been, there have been some major changes, right?
There have. Our landscaping ordinance has gotten a lot more robust. Our lighting ordinance is also much more in-depth about the amount of light trespass that's allowed to happen between commercial and residential developments. And I know that the trees are coming up a lot, the evergreen trees, and the power company cutting those. Of course, I mean, they, they have to maintain their equipment and ensure power is getting delivered to customers. But if buffering, if above, if a required buffer is being taken out, city staff can't do anything about that unless we're notified about it. So we do have some mechanisms in place to hopefully, you know, not negate, but to deal with some of these concerns as best we can, and going forward, hopefully, ensure that the requirements are maintained. But like I said, we'd be more than happy to take this, these bullet points, get back with Mr. McClure, and give him, you know, formal answers, rather than going back and forth in the meeting right now. But I just wanted to be transparent and above board. We're not trying to hide the project. It's not something we were supposed to notify them about, and we didn't. It's just, in this case, there's not a public hearing, so we don't do that.
Right. I think I'd be remiss to see if there's any comments.
I just had a question. Tom Martin, and one of his responses said he would be happy to reach out to the developer with some of these concerns, and I was wondering if that was ever done.
So Tom is, Tom is at home in quarantine right now. I didn't get a chance, since we just got this today, to reach out to the engineer on the project to see whether they were interested in putting out a fence. That's definitely something we can ask, and we would be happy to do so. And I'll definitely put that in my memo to Mr. McClure, whether that's something they're interested in doing or not. Of course, it would be optional, but...
Right. But, I mean, our experience has been, most developers like to be good neighbors, and if they haven't even heard these concerns, and I don't know if they have or not, I definitely think reaching out to them, as part of your discussions with Mr. McClure certainly, certainly would be part of this process.
Absolutely. Well, we'll ask and see if that's something they're interested in doing at the benefit of the neighbors, possibly to them as well.
Wouldn't a light leak onto neighbors' property, which may not happen right now because of the building in the way, wouldn't that be an offense if they, if they take down the building and therefore the light goes into the neighbors' property, the lights from the existing parking lot? I mean, that, that doesn't sound like too hard a thing to fix. You just put those downlights instead of the spreadlights, I don't know what they're called, but AEP did it in front of our house in about five minutes one day, and we didn't even know the light was still, we thought the light was burned out because all of a sudden the light was not in our yard.
Yeah. So if, if the light trespass exceeds .5-foot candles at the property line, it would be considered a zoning violation. I've, I've not had a chance to review the lighting plan myself. That's something that Tom was working on. But we'll definitely make sure it takes into account the existing utility poles in addition to what they are adding with this project.
This is Cham, why, I don't know if, I hope I'm not interrupting anybody.
No, go ahead, Cham.
Yeah, you know, full disclosure, I live one street over from Clayton. I live actually on Linden, and the neighborhood has been quite a uproar about this appliance with Kroger. And informally, not as a member of the Planning Commission or in any other capacity, but informally, I have spoken over the last couple of months with both the manager and the assistant manager, and have just said, you know, they, they need to make certain that the neighborhood is happy with how they proceed with these changes. Because I said, it's going to be counterproductive, because I said, I didn't use the word boycott, but I said, there's going to be a great number of people who will not come into the Kroger if this is not handled properly, from the reconfiguration of the building and where the gas pumps are, and the lights, and things of that nature. So, and, and they were very responsive, and it wasn't, obviously, not the first time they've had conversations, you know, to a certain extent, they said, listen, you know, we're not the decision-makers in this, and I understand that from a corporate viewpoint. I'm sure they have a corporate management, property management company that makes these kind of decisions. But as I said, informally, there's been a lot of, of discussion with at least local management folks from Kroger. And I, I hope they're getting the message that they need to, to make these changes in a responsible manner that people in the neighborhood feel comfortable with. I don't know, Mr. McClure, Paul, I, I know I've met you and your wife before, and, and I do want to come by and look at the back part of the property, just haven't had a chance. But have you talked to, have you talked to, to the manager, the assistant manager at all?
I have not. No? There, it's a possibility that some of my neighbors have, and like you said, residents up and down the street of Clayton Avenue are, are very concerned, and would hope that they can maintain a good relationship with Kroger. We see it as, as our local neighborhood grocery market, and, and we understand that, that times change and certain buildings need to come down. So we're not actually petitioning or advocating for the permanence of that building. But when it comes down, we hope that the existing light poles, the noise, any debris, things of that nature would be taken into consideration when, when the plan is tried to be actualized.
Well, I remember when the recycling center was removed from there years ago, and there was kind of a mini boycott by people who were very upset by that. And it, it came back, so, and that was out of the hands of the store. It was the, the owners from out of state, so. But I do think that the people will listen, and it sounds like working with staff is, is the next step for you, and then seeing what happens as a result of that. Because I know they can address a lot of these issues, especially your comments about the utilities and potential for underground and tree cutting and stuff like that.
I certainly appreciate you coming and sharing. I wish more, more citizens would get involved in the things going around in their community, and, and you can be sure that you've been heard. So, thank you. Next order of business is the following: public hearing. It's a consideration of a petition of Jefferson House LLC for a conditional use permit at 1818 Langhorne Square to allow the construction of 65 senior housing units in a B3 community business district. So Rachel, you want to open that up?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if we have the screens on today, but if not, you can follow along with the maps in your packet. Screen's going away. It's a definite no.
It's coming back.
So this area is approximately 1 and 49 hundredths acres located at 1818 Langhorne Square. If the CUP is approved, it would be subdivided from a larger parcel, which is 2.33 acres. You can't see it yet, but that's okay. The purpose of the CUP is to allow the construction of a five-story, 10,800-square-foot building containing 65 senior affordable units. The city's comprehensive plan and future land use map recommend a mixed use for the area. The multi-household structures are permitted in this zoning district, B3 community business, upon approval of a CUP by City Council. The existing building contains 101 senior units. If the CUP is approved, again, the existing parcel will be subdivided, and an additional 65-unit apartment building would be constructed on-site. The proposed units would be deed restricted to seniors that are rent-burdened, and the existing facility would also be improved. The approval of the CUP to allow the construction, they probably can't see it because I didn't hook up my computer, the approval of the CUP to allow the construction of affordable senior housing units should have little impact on the area and is consistent with both the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the Midtown Area Master Plan, which talks about creating a village center sort of area here, along town with the, alongside the Midtown Medical District. The primary concern with the proposed development was that of parking. A total of 166 units would be at this location with only 67 parking spaces between the two buildings, which is less than half of the normally required one-to-one ratio, one space, one unit, that is required by the zoning ordinance. But based on the availability of mass transit and the parking need demonstrated by the petitioner in the narrative in your packet, plus the restriction of senior housing, which seniors tend to drive less, parking should not become too much of an issue. The location of the senior housing within walking distance to medical offices and retail uses should fit well into the area. The city's Technical Review Committee reviewed the petition on November 17th, 2020. Comments were minor in nature, and planning staff recommends approval of the petition with the condition outlined in the report.
Thank you. All right. Who's here to speak on behalf of this petition? If you please come forward and state your name and sign, sign there on the form, and tell us about what you're planning.
All right. My name is Joe Eddy. I'm president of JU Properties. We're a Boston-based company. We have a few different affiliates. We have another affiliate called Westminster Company that's based out of Greensboro, North Carolina. So, you know, our, our company, and I should also say, Patrick Profit's here as well from, from, you know, he's, he's local, and, you know, our, our company basically does mostly affordable housing. We do market-rate housing as well as hotels. You know, we, we basically came across this property a year and a half ago, or two years ago. It was a mess. The current property was, before we bought it, was in default multiple times with Virginia Housing, you know, previously VHDA. So they had a lot of capital needs, had a, you know, huge roof problem, leaks, you know, infestation of, you know, all kinds of stuff because of the leaks. So we bought it, and we've been fixing up, you know, new roof, we're putting a new, you know, heating and cooling system in, we're going to start redoing common areas. But part of our, our plan as, as, you know, as part of our acquisition plan was to, you know, build, you know, additional units to, you know, improve the economics of the project. We're looking to do this as a low-income housing tax credit deal, so we would be applying in March to VHDA. So, you know, if we got approvals on this, we would apply in March, and, you know, it's, you know, it's not guaranteed, obviously, you get the tax credits. So if we did get it, we would, it would be, you know, approved in July, and we would start probably in the following March. If it didn't, we would apply the next year, and it would start the March after that. I think, you know, as she kind of outlined, you know, it's in the Medical Arts District. We thought it's a great use for, you know, it's, it's an awesome location for senior housing. It's like you fall out of the building, you're at the hospital. I think one of the, you know, a couple of good things about the project as well, we put a sidewalk in, we're right in front of a bus stop. You know, we would put a bench or some kind of kiosk there for, for residents. You know, I was talking to the property manager today, and only about 25 of the residents have cars, you know, another 25 or so, you know, use daily the, the bus stop there, was her general kind of feeling. So, yeah, I mean, we think it's a, you know, it's a great project, you know, it, like, I think she said, you know, it fits well with, I think, you know, a lot of the plans the city has, and so that was our, that was our thought process on it.
Great, thank you. Now, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Because you might want to stay. We might have some questions for you before you sit down.
Yeah, happy to.
Anybody else want to speak in favor? And any opposition? Yeah, so we can, we can actually close the public hearing and address any questions right now before you sit, if anybody does have questions.
You, just talking about the parking, you said currently about half of the residents have cars?
So it's, there's 42 spots currently, about 25, so there's 101 units, about 25 residents have cars.
Out of 100?
Yeah, of 101. It's all seniors, all 55-plus.
Sure, sure, I understand.
And the rest of, we did a parking, basically we have our staff every day checking in the morning, and the afternoon, and at night, and I think our high was like 31, 32 parking spots, and a lot of that's home health aides coming in.
Right, right.
And then we have three, three staff members as well.
Okay. Thank you.
The proposed pedestrian connectors, are they at grade?
They are.
Yeah. So they walk through the parking lot to get to the other building? Okay. I just wondered.
Excuse me, I walked around the site this weekend, and it's a, it's a pretty steep drop-off, and when you step off that parking lot. And so the footprint looks like it goes out pretty far into the ravine. It shows an underground detention storage area. There was not necessarily a permanent creek, but there was, there was something down there. I'm just wondering how far out that really goes into that ravine area.
So Patrick, you may.
Yeah.
You better.
I'll answer that question.
And if you could make sure you sign your name, too, please. Thanks, Pat.
So Patrick Profit with Hurt &amp; Profit, and we worked with Mr. Eddy to prepare this CUP plan, but we also looked at grades and that kind of thing. Of course, we have to report on how we're going to handle stormwater. So you're exactly right, we get close to the ravine or the natural channel, but we don't get into it. The building is actually back off of it somewhat. The parking area extends a little bit further, but we'll pretty much stop that vertically with retaining walls. So we want to be really careful about actually not getting construction into, if we can possibly help it, into that water course, which is, you know, environmentally, it's not jurisdictional anyway, or it has a piping system dumping into it, and it, it goes... anyway, or it has a piping system dumping into it, and it goes a little bit further down into a natural channel, which is off the property. It eventually does, yes.
That ravine is where Tate Springs are. They're still there, the little stone basins where.
Where the springs come up. They were right behind the old Fine Arts Center.
So it looks like the gradient actually helps with your underground detention space. It kind of fits within that with a retaining wall?
I'm sorry, sir.
I said it looks like the underground detention, does that kind of fit the gradient with a retaining wall and that's, you can use some of that slope for that?
It does. I mean, so what we'll do is that's all fill. So we'll literally bring that up to the bottom of that device, that detention structure, and just include that as part of the fill. So that kind of works out pretty nicely, you know, again, with the fill, with the wall. There's a second one on the left-hand side of the property as well. So there's actually two of those module systems that we'll propose in there. And then for the stormwater quality portion, we, you know, we advise the owner to purchase credits, stormwater credits.
And those are obviously improvements over how it had been.
I believe it is, yes, sir.
I think it does have the potential. I mean, the footprint is not much larger than what's there now, and there's nothing in place right now.
Right.
So it could be better off after the fact.
And that's a good point. There's a lot of impervious there now, which essentially.
Just a big parking lot.
Yeah. The efficiency is the building's going vertically.
So I mean, I think, I mean, I think this is a good fit for this area and it serves a need, and it's also not a radical petition. We're not rezoning. We're just addressing a CUP request.
Just seems to me that last month, in five years, which probably three years ago, we were scrambling around trying to find this type of housing. And to your point, you're taking a building that was less than perfect and fixing, so I'm 100% behind it.
Thanks, Mr. Profit. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? I think it's a great, a great project, you know, seeing the needs that we have in the community, you know, that we have things like this, these kind of opportunities. So I'm supportive of this petition myself.
Chairman, do you have any comments to add or questions?
No, no, I'm fine.
In the absence of any further discussion, I would move that we accept the proposal as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, any other comments before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, say no. Passes unanimously. I appreciate you bringing that to us and good luck at City Council. Look forward to seeing good things happen over there. Have a good day.
If we have AV ability, if we could retry that, I am connected now. Oh, that one's just off, maybe, okay.
Do you have it?
I don't know if that, I don't know if the big one's working, but the presentation is in your packet. It's toward the end of the telecommunications PDF. Actually, page 43, if you're looking at just that one.
Okay, so we got that. So the next order of business is this, is this hearing on the telecommunications ordinance, and we are considering amending Section 35-2 to 61-2 of the City of Lynchburg zoning ordinance additional height regulations by adding Section D flag poles, light poles, and utility poles. Also be considering proposed amendments to the City of Lynchburg zoning ordinance that seeks to repeal zoning ordinance chapters 35-2 through 73-1 through 35-2, 73-20 of the City of Lynchburg zoning ordinance related to telecommunication towers. Simultaneously with the repeal of the foregoing chapters, the proposed amendments also propose consideration of the adoption of new zoning ordinance chapters 35-2, 73-1 through 35-2, 73-26 pertaining to telecommunication facilities. The proposed amendment shall be referred to herein as the telecommunications facilities ordinance. So Rachel, I believe that you would not be acting as staff in this one, but our guest would, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission, with us we have Mr. Patrick Taves, who has been working with Tom Martin on the telecommunications ordinance for quite some time now, and he is going to give you a presentation.
Thank you, Rachel. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if my, is my mic on? Okay, good. Thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here with the commission again. We've streamlined somewhat the presentation today, so hopefully we'll be able to get through it a little quicker than we did the last time. Going back to what you just listed, Mr. Chairman, there are four, there are basically four items that we're dealing with today. The first one deals with, and I'll explain during the presentation why we're talking about setbacks for flag poles, light poles, and utility poles. But that's the first item really that comes in. The main item, of course, is the adoption of the new telecommunications ordinance. The third item is the repeal of the existing telecommunications ordinance. So we're taking the old ordinance, throwing it out, putting a brand-new ordinance in its place instead of amending little provisions here and there. And the final provision relates to the approval types in the charts that y'all have in the existing ordinance for each zoning district. And right now, the way it's set up is for wireless communications facilities, it has either a C for a conditional use permit, if that's required, or a P for permitted. And there are, under the proposed amendments, there are some districts in which a telecommunications facility might be permitted use or it might be a conditional permit use. So we would revise those provisions in those charts if the new telecommunications ordinance gets adopted. Now, you may be wondering, well, why, and the public may be wondering, well, why are we here? Why are we changing our ordinance? Well, the main reason is that it's been almost 20 years since the current ordinance has been in place, and over that time, there have been many, many changes in state and federal law relating to these provisions. Suffice it to say that the current ordinance is woefully out of date. And the, one of the types of facilities, and this is a good example of how it's out of date, the current law in Virginia talks about small cell facilities, administrative review eligible projects, and standard process projects. Well, those are terms that don't exist in your ordinance as we speak. And so we're incorporating those provisions and laying out the requirements with respect to each of those provisions. Timeliness for review, depending on the, with the type of facility you're talking about, the, there are two timeliness requirements. And I'll get into both those in more detail later on. But what we're, a concept that is being introduced is that of a shot clock. And y'all may know shot clocks in terms of basketball, where if you don't get a shot off that hits the rim within 24 seconds in the pros, then you turn the ball over. Well, what happens here is even more devastating, not just turning the ball over, but if we don't meet the deadlines, if the city doesn't meet the deadlines laid out by state and federal law and laid out in our ordinance, then what happens is either the application is deemed complete even if it's not, or the application is deemed approved even if it shouldn't be. We'll also be talking about where the facilities are permitted, the height, depending on the district, and setbacks also come into play. So I mentioned small cell facilities, I'll call them AREPs if I may, administrative review eligible projects and standard process projects. You start out with a small cell facility, and those are the smaller ones, and then you get bigger with the AREPs, and you get to the biggest ones, which is standard process projects. There's kind of a subset with respect to standard, excuse me, small cell facilities, and those are called micro wireless facilities. And if you're really small, like 24 inches in length, 15 inches in width, 12 inches in height, and no exterior antenna greater than 11 inches, then there is no approval required. There are no requirements that can apply. So if you start out with the micro wireless, small cell facilities have some regulations applicable to them, but not a whole lot you can do with them. Administrative review, still administrative review, you can't, you can't subject it to a public hearing or anything like that. Then standard process project, that's where you get into the conditional use permits possibly being required. Now, as I mentioned the last time we were here in November, this, these ordinance provisions are very much anti-local government. And I'll give you a number of ways that they are. I mentioned an application can be deemed complete even if it's not, or an application can be deemed approved even if it shouldn't be. There's a limited discretion for the city for facilities under 50 feet in height. There are limitations on fees that the city can impose, regardless of whatever the city's expenses are. There are limited grounds for approval. There, once the city takes action on one of these facilities, if the city were to disapprove the facility, you have to give a written statement, put in writing exactly why that facility was disapproved. And I can tell you from litigating zoning cases over the last 40 years, that when legislative acts are taken by local government bodies, you don't have to do that. You don't have to explain the reason for your decision every time. And that is a great advantage to localities in those zoning-type situations, because if the city gets sued on something like that, then you bring the lawyers in and the lawyers can marshal the facts, marshal the evidence, and defend yourself. Here, not so easy. You have to have it right there in the written statement. You also have to publicly release in writing a substantial record evidence within 30 days of the decision. So when you have one of these facilities and there is a disapproval, there are a lot of hoops that have to be jumped through by the city. So in terms of what this ordinance applies to, there is a carve-out. And this carve-out is with respect to small cell facilities. We went over the size of those facilities, really small cell facilities. If they're in the right-of-way or they're on city property, then this ordinance does not apply to them. And the reason for that is the city has franchise agreements with respect to those types of facilities, and the listed ordinance provisions that you see cover those types of facilities in those areas. Page six, the slide six gives you an example. I mentioned limitations on grounds for disapproval. Well, this is for the small cell facilities. And with these small cell facilities, these are the four grounds that can be used to disapprove one of these facilities. Nothing else, nothing else. The statute specifically provides for these provisions, and if you have some other issue that came up, some other defect, or some other complaint from citizens or whatever, it's not going to make a difference. And if you look at these, these provisions are very narrow in and of themselves. The first one, material potential interference. Well, it's not just any interference, it has to be material potential interference, and it has to be planned for a specific location or reserved for public safety communications. So that's a really narrow situation. Second one, safety of the public. That is very difficult to quantify. How do you, how do you measure safety of the public? The third one, aesthetic impact, is going to have very little bearing in the City of Lynchburg because of the carve-out that I just mentioned, because if it's on city property or on a city building or whatever, it's not, you can't get into evaluating that. And then the last one deals with historic districts, and that doesn't even apply if there's a federal review process that applies to those types of facilities, those districts. The way we've structured the ordinance is this. There are, if you look at pages 1 through 23 or thereabouts, those are the provisions that are, I would say, required by state and federal law, and city has very little flexibility on those. If you, if we wanted to tinker with them, that would, the courts would not like that. So we tried to structure those pages that go through small cell facilities, go through the AREPs, and go through the standard process projects, listing each type of facility and then all of the provisions that apply to that type of facility. Now, you're going to see some redundancy, because the AREPs and the standard process projects have a lot of the requirements the same. But we wanted to make it easier for the city, for the residents, and any cell company evaluating these provisions to determine what they had to meet, how quickly responses have to be made to applications, what is the flexibility with respect to that type of facility, so on and so forth. So if you go through, you can see small cell facilities are from pages 6 through 9 of the ordinance, AREPs 9 through 15, and standard process projects 15 through 24. Now, once you get past that, page 23, 24, right in that area, and we're talking about permitted uses, and we'll have, we have this page, but we're going on to permitted uses, conditional use permits, the standards and everything. But those areas and those pages of the ordinance, that's where the city has more flexibility. There isn't anything from the state or federal requirements that say you have to allow these and these facilities in these districts. It's, so the city has some flexibility with respect to the permitted uses, when they're going to be permitted. I would note, however, that that's only with respect to standard process projects, because we know what the rules are for the others, for the smaller facilities. Standard process projects over 50 feet, the tall towers that y'all are accustomed to dealing with, those are going to be the ones where conditional use permits can be required. The other ones, the small cells and the AREPs, conditional use permits cannot be required. So there's no flexibility there. And you can see that there's, we've taken various districts, and I don't think we've changed in drafting this. Tom and I tried to stay very much to the course of what the ordinance says right now in terms of the zoning districts and the heights. You can see the B1, we treated that separately, and that's permitted use, these facilities are permitted uses in the B1 if it's less than 100 feet. Now, if it's not a permitted use, it could be a conditional use permit use, and that's on the eighth slide there. There are two types of districts that we deal with here, and when I say types of districts, I mean, there are two groupings. The first grouping is what I'll call the lower-density districts, the residential RC, R1, R2, R3, R4, IN1, and B4. So they're sort of lumped together and treated in one way. The B1 is out by itself, and it's got that 100-foot limit. And then the more intense districts, the B3, B5, IN2, I1, I2, and I3 are where you're going to find allowances for the larger facilities. Now, co-location, we try to encourage, and the law tries to encourage co-location. Co-location is when you have an existing structure and you have a facility that you want to put on that existing structure, so there's less disruption to the aesthetic impact and everything if you're attaching antennas. And this is being done all throughout the country, attaching antennas to existing structures. You'd much rather have that than a standalone pole. Sometimes there's no way around it for those companies. But this ordinance tries to encourage them to make their facilities, make the wireless support structures lower or already in existence, so that it's not going to disturb the peace of all the people who are living in the community. to disturb the peace of all the people who are, who are living in the community. Now, if a conditional use permit, and this is slide nine, if a conditional use permit is required, then we get to draft some standards, and, and we've drafted these standards here in accordance with, with what I think, you know, you're allowed to do. Now, I would note that the, the most important standard, in my judgment, is the one about, with respect to substantial conformance with the comprehensive plan. Because that, talking about flexibility and discretion, that is where the city has a lot of flexibility and discretion. And the reason why in land use cases is, the comprehensive plan, of course, is drafted before you have an application. It's drafted long, long before anybody has an issue with a particular facility. And therefore, your foresight comes into play, and it doesn't look like, well, the city's just opposing that because these people are complaining. No, the city said many years ago, hopefully, that these types of facilities in these areas perhaps shouldn't be allowed, and, and maybe they ought to be allowed in other areas. And so you get a lot more discretion from the courts with respect to the comprehensive plan. But that's, of course, we're not amending the comprehensive plan today. I mention that to you because we are putting in, in, as one of our standards, the substantial conformance with the comprehensive plan. So one, one thing that you may want to follow up on is, is to address whether or not you have sufficient standards in the, in the comprehensive plan, you have sufficient projection for the future through the comprehensive plan with respect to wireless telecommunications facilities. Now, some of these you've seen before, and we figured that, well, if the denial for a small cell facility can be based on, on material, no potential material interference with pre-existing facilities, et cetera, et cetera, then, then it's appropriate here. And so that's, the fourth bullet, the fifth bullet is, derives from that. The seventh bullet about the historic district also derives from that. Now, with respect to setbacks, let me, let me explain one thing about, and you may be wondering, well, why are you talking about utility poles and flag poles and light poles? Well, the, the reason is that the ordinance, the, excuse me, the statute requires the city, basically says the city cannot have a setback or a fall zone. And we don't have fall zones, we're not proposing fall zones. But can't have a setback or a fall zone that, that exceeds the setback or the fall zone you have for similar structures. So Tom and I had to put our heads together and determine, well, what is a similar structure to a wireless telecommunications facility? And the best we could come up with, and, and, you know, if you have any better structures that are more similar, free to hear, you know, we'll, we'll evaluate those. But the best we could come up with was the flag poles, light poles, and utility poles. They, they're similar in height sometimes, similar in how they look, and, and various features like that. So in, with those requirements non-existent right now, there's no setback requirement for a flag pole, light pole, or utility pole. So we had to establish those standards, and that's why when I was, when I was talking about the four items that the commission has before today, that's the first item, really, to establish what those standards will be for the setbacks for the flag poles, light poles, or utility poles. And then, and then, once you've done that, then you can go and we can adopt the, the present ordinance. So here we have several different, different gradients for, for the setbacks. 35 feet and, or less, there's no setback requirement at all. And then we have the, the lower density districts, and those are the RC through, if I may, B4, without listing all of those. Those lower density districts, if you have, if you have a flag pole or light pole in those districts, it's the height of the pole, that's the setback, the height of the pole. Now, of course, if it's 35 feet or less, it's zero. So you don't have to worry about that. Now, if it's in, in a district, in, in one of the lower density districts, or, excuse me, if, if the property that the facility is on, the flag pole, light pole, et cetera, is, is next to the lower density district, then you have to set back the height of the, the height of the structure from the lower density district, wherever that may be. Then when you get to the higher density districts, the B1 through I3, if it's between 35 and 50 feet, the minimum setback is, is the requirement. So that's already built into your ordinance. And if it's beyond 50 feet, so the taller structures, the setbacks can be one-half the height of the structure. Now, of course, th- this is what we're proposing for the, the poles, the flag poles, light poles, and utility poles. And we're proposing the same thing, same exact thing, for the telecommunications facilities. So if I may go back and, and repeat this, but to, just to remind the commission, there are four items here. So we have the adoption of the regulation for the setbacks for the poles, for the flag poles, light poles, and utility poles. The second, and, and this order, I think, is important, too. Because once that's established, then we know what we have to establish for the setbacks for the wireless poles. And that would be the adopt, the second part would be the adoption of the new telecommunications ordinance. Then once we have the new telecommunications ordinance adopted, we can repeal the old telecommunications ordinance. And then we have the revisions of the approval types in the charts for the various districts. And, and that, that isn't exactly, you know, it's, it's not going to, it will automatically happen when and if the, the commission and the, and the city council adopt the telecommunications ordinance. And whether we say C, or P, or C slash P, is, is, would be the result of that action of the adoption of the ordinance. And we didn't, we didn't want to put in, in the chart, "It depends," and then start a whole new question. So we figured it was appropriate enough to just say C, or P, or C slash P. So unless the commission has any questions, I don't have anything further to, to tell you about on this.
All right, well, we'll open it up for some questions, then. I don't know, we, we heard your, the, the presentation, I know this is abbreviated, and it was, I learned, I learned something about some of the changes. And, and it seems like a really, not just a make sense thing, but something that we have to do anyway, so.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, at least for the, the first part, 1 through 23, now, as I mentioned, you have more flexibility on the, on the provisions regarding permitted uses, conditional use permits, and that sort of thing. But that is the area where we did try to model that as much as possible after the current city ordinance, so that, so that there wouldn't, we, we know change is difficult. But when we're undergoing such a revolutionary concept with this new ordinance, those first 23 pages, we figured that the proposal at least ought to be not as, not as significant for the, for the latter pages.
Right. You want to have any comment or feedback?
Well, I assume you've done this before. You sound like you know what you're talking about, certainly. And I couldn't follow it all. But I'm, I assume these ordinances have been tested in other localities, maybe through courts or court.
Well, this, this particular ordinance, I can take you to, for example, the state code. And, and where you'll find the provisions about small cell facilities, the provisions about the administrative review eligible projects and the standard process projects, is in the state, it's in the state code. I'm, I am comfortable and comfortable with and recommend the adoption of this ordinance so now the city can come into the 21st century with respect to wireless telecommunications facilities. These are historically facilities where the courts are on the watch for local governments. There, there are, and I won't say the city or any particular local governments in Virginia, but around the country, a lot of local governments have, have abused the, the zoning purview with respect to these types of facilities. Because people come out and they, they don't like the idea of looking at this thing here, and it's ugly, and, and, but by the same token, you know, these, this is the 21st century, and people want to talk on their phones and that sort of thing. So I'm comfortable recommending very strongly the adoption of this ordinance so that we can bring the city's ordinance in, into compliance with the state, state code. And I've been dealing with telecommunications facilities for probably 25, 30 years, something like that. And so over those years, we've litigated many cases, never with this particular ordinance. But I think one thing that's telling is, we sent during the, the review process that Tom and I underwent, we sent the proposed ordinance out to telecommunications companies, the users, the people on the other side of the, of the application, who are going to get the benefit from, from this ordinance and any facilities that get adopted through this ordinance. And we, we got very minor questions. And, and obviously, nobody's here today. So I think that's probably a very good sign.
Just to take a minute, one, one step further is, what I'm hearing you say is, this is an evolving process. We're at the beginning of that evolution. And this at least gives us a framework to work with going forward. Can I be comfortable with that part?
No.
I mean, we've, we've covered everything we can, we can see and reasonably expect to cover, or expect to plan for at this point.
I think that's an excellent way of putting it. The, the, now, the first part, with respect to the particular requirements for each type of facility, unless the state law changes, or the federal law changes, then, then you're, you're pretty much locked into those. But as to the rest of the provisions about what, whether or not something ought to be permitted, whether or not something ought to be a conditional use permit, what the standards should be, and that sort of thing, I think that is an evolve, it, it's always an evolving process. And, and that's why one of the things I recommend in your case is, take a look at the comprehensive plan, have that evaluated, and maybe, maybe study that. At this point, this is the, the, you know, Tom and I racked our, our brains trying to come up with the best proposal we possibly can, and we think that, that's what this is.
Well, I guess where I'm trying to think about, and I may be wrong about this, let me ask this question first. It seems to me that the application of this ordinance, the place we're really going to have a lot of pushback, is going to be on what I would call the edges of Lynchburg. Because if you, you know, if you go to downtown or whatever, you'll put something on top of a building that already exists, because that would be the most cost-effective way to do it.
Right.
But when we start talking about places like maybe, well, just places on the edge that haven't received that development yet, that people might be in for a more rural experience, or they, you know, it's been a farm forever and ever and ever, you know, kind of situation, those are the places where we're going to talk about towers, where we're going to talk about the things that people, you know, throw up when they, when they think about the aesthetics. So if that, if that assumption is correct, then, in my mind, that's what we're trying to sort of protect down the road. That's, that's the sort of things that we're trying to make sure that we have some wiggle room, for lack of a better phrase. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
And if so, you know, I think the setbacks all make sense, because that's all going to happen in relatively, you know, developed areas. There may be a flag pole or two, you know, out as we get out. But I, I'm just, you know, just for the group as a thought process, I can't imagine anything else that we can do, given the limited, you know, maneuverability we have to, to really turn something down.
Well, what the federal law and the state law do not tell you is required, is, is what districts, you know, because they, everybody has different districts, everybody has different regulations in that regard. So they don't tell you, and really can't tell you, the districts that you must allow these facilities in by conditional use permit, or you must allow them to be permitted. They've already done that with respect to small cell facilities and A reps. You can't have a conditional use permit for those. So, so they've, they've decided that for us. And, and as long as they meet, the application meets the city's application requirements for the type of facility in question, then it's got to be approved. And, and it has to be approved in a very short period of time, depending on the facility, depending on the height, et cetera. And if it's not, if it's not, action is not taken within that timeframe, it's deemed approved. And, and it's a, a done deal at that point, is what I would say. But, yeah, I think you can, you can also, as, as the time goes by, and I'm not, not saying you have to do it necessarily within months, but maybe two or three years from now, take a look at how has this worked? How has, have these provisions, have we, have we had issues that have come up that, that we should add to the standards, for example, that, that must be reviewed when a conditional use permit application comes before the city? And, or you could, you could do that now, if, you know, if, if you thought there were additional things that, that Tom and I have not thought of that would improve this, of course, you, the city could adopt new provisions. But what we'd really like to see is this to get in place and then work from there.
Yeah, and I would argue, definitely, the time to revisit the comprehensive plan is once this has, has had time to settle. There's no rush to change the plan when this all might be changed again, I think. So like you said, I agree. Get something on the books, look at it again in a couple of years, and then also tackle the comp plan at that time.
I agree. But I, you know, I'm talking, I mean, that's kind of where I was going to go next, where it sounds like, you know, if that's your biggest bad, I'd like to know is that the comprehensive plan's consistent.
Mm-hmm.
With what we want in comp, you know, to the verbage, if you had to think about, I've got to take something out of this comprehensive plan to write for why you're saying no.
I just keep thinking back to, I don't know, it was our first or second meeting when we had that big cell tower thing, and it went on all night long, I think, because every neighbor within 10 miles of it came out to complain about, it's going to mess up my view of the mountains. And this would just take that away, right? I mean, it was off of Langhorne Road, it was in, on somebody's private land, it was in the middle of the woods, and it was going to be an evergreen tree kind of thing, sticking up a little higher than the woods. And this would just say, well, you haven't got any grounds, any?
No, no, I wouldn't go that far.
No?
I'd have to disagree with you.
Okay.
And was that the Langhorne Road project?
Langhorne Road, yes.
Okay. I actually, I actually had the benefit of having worked on that project for the city in terms of, I believe we drafted a fairly significant denial motion for that. So I, I don't think that that takes the, the city out of that game. Now, that project was, if I recall correctly, a large, large monopole. It wasn't, it wasn't an A rep, and it wasn't a small cell facility. It was a standard process project. It was, it was a, a facility to which the city could lawfully apply the conditional use permit requirements. And, and that is where the city has flexibility, has, you know, it's a legislative act when, when action is taken on it. So I wouldn't say that, that that takes the city out of that game. It does certainly for a small cell facility, or a, a smaller facility, you know, 50 feet or less, which might qualify as an A rep. But city would still be in that. If you look at, if we could go back to, let's see, the standards for CUPs, this is page nine. The second and third, I didn't, I didn't mention these, but these are, these were two that we used very significantly in that particular project. No significant adverse impact on use and enjoyment of nearby properties, and no significant negative impact on property values. And there, we went very thoroughly through the, the record, the evidence that people had submitted. And it wasn't just people tilting at windmills saying, well, you know, I don't like this or whatever. I mean, they had, they had a lot of evidence that was presented by, you know, people in good faith. I mean, it, it wasn't simply everybody, well, I don't want to see that, I don't want to look at it, or whatever. So in that situation, I would argue, proof's in the pudding, nobody sued us. And that was, you know, that was a victory, so to speak, when, when nobody sues you over, over the denial of one of these things. So that doesn't change. But what might evolve is if you amend your comprehensive plan at some point, you've added more tools that you can use to, to, to evaluate these proposals. And, and as I said earlier, when, when the city does that through the comprehensive plan... And as I said earlier, when the city does that through the comprehensive plan, it's not in the heat of the moment. It's not with an application sitting right there, and you have hundreds of people coming out like, you know, they want to put somebody on a pitchfork or whatever, because they're doing a bad thing to their livelihood. It's long before that, and that's why this comprehensive plan is such an important document for localities.
Well, I think, you know, when we look at the Langhorne Road, you know, I feel like we still, like you said, we still have tools, and we still have the ability to help lead planning in the community, but we're talking about some facilities that we probably haven't seen much of yet, that we're going to see more of, that we don't really, we haven't heard anything on these at all, really. We haven't had anybody come in and say, "I want to build a small cell facility, and I want approval for it." So I think we'll see more and more of that, because we do have blank areas that don't have service, and so I think it's a good thing, because these are very limited in their impacts, you know, in appearance, as compared to the standard process projects. And that might kind of, considering this is a very vital infrastructure, you know, this is something that, I think that's the way the government views it, is very vital, you know, almost like running water, and a lot of people aren't using landlines, it's sometimes a matter of public safety even, so. What do we do, Rachel, in this, you know, do we, is this something we vote on, or is this something that we just move forward to city council? I was remiss in asking that, too.
It's almost like any other zoning change, so you're making a recommendation to city council on what to do with this part of code change. So you would, we are looking for a recommendation and an action and a vote, yeah.
Okay.
Motion B4.
I think it's all written into one.
Together, because of all bills.
I couldn't find the motion.
It builds on one, one builds on the next. You can't, if you don't pass the first, you can't do the others. I think that's the idea.
I think, yes, I would agree, that one follows from the other, and that's why I put them in that order.
Mm-hmm.
Page three, Bob, page three. I'm going to give a note here. Young man, concerned about the number of shops that he left before he got to the lighting poles, and the setbacks with poles, that's, you know, that's out.
That's less than 35 feet, though. You don't have to worry about less than 35.
Yeah. And the dog was, okay, and then we can get the laws of light lead, stuff like that, like, unless it was good for you, that you're upset about.
So I think if someone's making a motion, we would make the motion of recommendation of approval of the zoning amendments, ordinance as written.
Then we approve the zoning amendments as written in.
Second.
Okay, so we have a second. Does anybody else have any comment, any more discussion before we put it to a vote?
Should we open the public hearing and close it, just for the minute's sake?
Sure, sure, yeah, we can accept. Is anybody here to speak? I know we don't have anybody here, but we might have somebody who stepped in online who might want to speak about this.
Any emails, what's mails?
Any emails, any comments at all?
Cham, do you have anything to add? I lost Cham.
That'd be a no.
This thing's too loud.
There's just nobody to second.
That wasn't.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I hope I'm not out of order here. The, you may want to consider each of the four items that I was mentioning, and say it in terms of hypothetically, I move that the commission recommend approval of, fill in the blank, you know, each of the four items, as advertised. And that also works, if you go to your advertisement, that works for the last part, which is a little, a little different from the others, the chart, chart references. This is on, I don't know if you have it before you, page, should be page three of the advertisement. And if I may, it's a lengthy paragraph, do you want me to read that paragraph, Ms. Chairman?
That would be great.
Okay, it says, "In accordance with the adoption of the proposed amendments, the approval type for wireless telecommunications transmission that is stated in each exhibit chart, exhibit slash chart for each applicable zoning district, paren, for example, please see exhibit five, excuse me, exhibit four dash one for the RC district, close paren, shall be revised in order to state that the approval type, C for conditional permit, use permit, and/or P for permitted, for each zoning district, consistent with the terms of the proposed amendments. Thus, if under the proposed amendments, a wireless telecommunications facility may be allowed with a conditional use permit, C, or may be permitted, P, depending on the circumstances, then the approval type in the exhibit slash chart for each district shall be stated as follows, P slash C. If such facilities are only allowed by conditional use permit, a C will be inserted in the applicable exhibit, and if such facilities are only permitted, a P will be inserted in the applicable exhibit." Now, that is part of the advertisement that was made for this public hearing.
So that's the first of four?
That would actually be the last of four. The first of, the first of four would be the amendments to the flag, the regulations relating to flagpoles, lightpoles, and utility poles. And you could say that as advertised.
Well, thankfully, I don't have to make the motion, so somebody else can find that, and.
I'd say what he said.
But we can't say as written in the, a motion can be made to accept what's written in the advertisement.
Sure.
In that order.
Mm-hmm. Because it is a written document.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So Bob, you made that first.
Yes, I will amend the motion to reflect as it's written in the advertisement.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so now we've amended our move to accept our motion, and we've also asked for any public comment. Finding none, I think we can move to a vote.
I guess, though, when, I don't know if it's point of order, but I mean, I've never voted on something that was not presented to us as part of our official documents, so I can't find this anywhere.
I've been looking, that's why I said someone else can.
I'm sitting here looking at the first document.
We've always had something in our documents that we vote on.
See, this is one, two, three, the first document you pull up, is it.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, like, that's what I said, on the bottom of page three.
Right.
The Planning Division recommendation, based on the preceding findings of fact, the planning commission recommends to city council approve of amending the zoning ordinance by adopting section 35 dot two through 61 dot two, bow leg D, flagpoles, lightpoles, and utility poles, and approval of repealing sections 35 dot two through 73 dot one through, 35 dot two through 73 dot 20 related to telecommunications towers, and replacing the sections.
All right, well, I'll take your word for it, because I can't find it.
Well, no, I mean, that's the way the thing reads, and I guess, just so we're clear, it looks like to me, based on what the Planning Division recommends on page three, that everything's covered.
Yeah.
We've repealed the current, we've repealed what's currently there, we've replaced it with the, with the new, with the new verbiage, and we've added the section about lightpoles to make it, to make our code consistent.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, the paragraph that I read is in the advertisement.
Right, that's what I saw.
For this hearing. It's in, Rachel's going to give you, that's my contribution.
It might be in this, there's 85 pages.
Right.
So we go to page three, you know, we find just the opening.
Summary.
Yeah, so that's page three of the legal notice.
Yeah, so.
So I think, because I think the advantage of going off of the advertisement is going to be, you've got the level of detail.
Right.
And I think, I'm thinking down the road towards, because I think this is what you said, that's what I heard, what I interpreted anyway, was, if it ever came up, we've got the verbiage in there from a legal standpoint, that's much more defensible.
Sure.
Or whatever the right word is.
Well, the advertisement determines what issues are before the commission today.
Correct.
And if it's not in the advertisement, and it is.
It's a little more detailed than what we normally have in, I mean, in a proposed motion, but I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's consistent with what's in there.
So Rachel, do we have this in this 85-page document? Is this advertisement in here?
So like Mr. Taves was saying, the verbiage in the legal ad determines what the public hearing is. So by referencing that, we are covered.
Yeah, now, what motion as advertised? So, it sounded, okay, so we can go ahead and vote to move this on to council, recommend it to council? So all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? No? Okay, the motion carries, and that will go to city council, and thank you again. And I will defer, always defer to an attorney, you know, who does this stuff.
My pleasure.
So, yeah, thank you. Great. All right. I don't think we have anything else, we have anything new that we don't know about? Or anything old that we don't know about? My thing says new or old business, so.
I have none.
Yeah, do we have a meeting again on the, we have it?
There's no second meeting in December.
Okay, so.
January 13th. Yeah, the meeting will be January 13th, and we do have a line, so.
Just one? Can't we have more?
Well, maybe more by then, but right now, just one.
Okay, great.
All taken for planning commission.
Oh, yeah, that's right. All right. Everybody?
I'm going to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, aye. Have a good day.